Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a forum for candidates for the November 8th general election for Anoka County Commissioner, District 6. And this includes Blaine and Spring Lake Park. And my name is Kathy Tinglestedt, and I'm a member of the Anoka-Blaine Coon Rapids League of Women Voters, and we are the sponsors of the Meet the Candidates tonight. I live in Coon Rapids, so I'm not able to vote for these candidates who are representing potentially the areas of Blaine and Spring Lake Park. Okay. So, the League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens to become informed citizens and advocates for important issues as well as voting. That's the most important thing, League of Women Voters. So if you're interested in the League, please check out our website. It's the abbreviation of our name, League of Women Voters, ABCMinnesota.org, and I'll just spell that out real quick. L-W-V-A-B-C-M-N dot O-R-G. And we have women, men, and young people as members of our group, and everyone's invited to join. The candidates will answer two introductory questions which they received in advance, and that'll be followed by questions which were submitted by the public via our website and through the League of Women Voters. And then at the end, we'll have closing statements. So the first two questions are 90 seconds each, and everything else is 60 seconds. And we do have a timer here who will be letting us know where we're at with those number of seconds, so thank you. Okay. The candidates will take turns answering the questions, and they flip coins ahead of time. But first, let me welcome our two candidates, Dave Clark and also Julie Jepson. Welcome. Okay. So the flip of the coin ended up that Dave Clark will take the first question, and that was one that was given to them ahead of time. 90 seconds to answer. What is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively? Dave?
Great, thank you. So I'd like to, you know, give my thanks to League of Women Voters, you know, for making this forum possible, you know, and all the people that are working behind the scenes, doing the grunt work that nobody sees. And, you know, thank you to everybody that's tuning in and taking the time to be an informed voter. So I've lived in Blaine since 91. All four of my kids went through the public school system, graduated from Blaine High School. I had the honor of serving on the Blaine City Council from 1999 through 2019. In that time, Blaine grew from 45,000 people to over 63,000. That's a 40% growth. You know, as a city, you do not grow like that. You don't sustain that kind of growth unless you're doing things right. My regular full-time employment, I'm a business development manager for a hand tool company. I've been with this company for 22 years. Prior to that, I had my own small business, and then another corporate stint prior to that. You know, I've got my bachelor's and my master's degree, and I've got, you know, 30-plus years of private sector experience, mostly in management roles. You know, you combine that with my local government experience, you know, very, I think that's a pretty good set of qualifications to serve on the county board.
Okay. And with that same question, what is your motivation to run for this office? What experiences or knowledge do you bring that would help you serve effectively? Next up is Julie Jepson.
Thank you. And I echo Dave's comments and appreciation to the League of Women Voters to having us here this evening. Good evening, my name is Julie Jepson. I'm running for Anoka County Commissioner, District 6. My husband Nate and I moved to Blaine a little over 18 years ago. We have a daughter who's attending George Washington University, and a son who just started his freshman year at Spring Lake Park High School. Since living and moving into Blaine, I have devoted my time and energy in volunteering for Anoka County nonprofits and my local schools where my kids attended. For the last 10 years, I ran a successful and growing nonprofit, Stepping Stone Emergency Housing, in which I gave my resignation three months prior to my last day of July 29 because I was needing to be focused solely on winning this campaign. Halfway through, and I'm also halfway through my second term with Blaine's City Council. Blaine is the 10th largest city in the state. We are also the largest city in Anoka County. Since 2013, Blaine has added $5.75 billion in value to Anoka County. Spring Lake Park is a small, yet mighty, city that has successfully served the community and its residents, businesses, and local school districts. My motivation to win is to win because when you vote for me, you will have the confidence in knowing that I will can, excuse me, you will have the confidence in knowing that I will commit the time, attention, and expertise to be successfully representing you and supporting these two great cities and the Anoka County as in its entirety.
Thank you. And with the rotation of questions, we'll start this one with Julie Jepson, and it is, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County?
Thank you. I have three primary goals. First and foremost, fully fund Highway 65. I have been successful in my years of being on council for that goal, and I will continue to do that moving into the Anoka County role. We're well on our way and expect to have shovels in the ground next year with all the dollars that we have secured for the first intersection of 99th and Central as well as the frontage road. My second priority and goal is to provide safe communities through prudent investments. It's been my honor and privilege to support the Blaine PD and SBM Fire so that they can be successful in serving our community, and I look forward to spreading that support to Anoka County. And finally, I will continue to make fiscally responsible decisions while maintaining quality services. It's very important that we attract businesses to our communities and support them as tax, and support them while watching our tax dollars and respecting our taxpayers while keeping service levels very, very high in what we're all accustomed to.
Thank you. And same question, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County? Dave Clark?
Thank you. You know, of course, my number one goal is, you know, transportation, you know, Highway 65. You know, when I was on the council, we did a lot of work on Highway 65, putting overpasses at 121st, 125th, 129th, doing frontage roads. You know, at one point, we had a plan with MINDOT for redoing the middle section of Highway 65. Didn't pan out. And kudos to the current council and the people at the county that have been working so diligently. And let's not forget our local elected, our senators and our state representatives that have been working on this. Public safety is very important. You know, I believe that, you know, our law enforcement officers need to know that the public has their back, because sometimes they do a job that's not very fun. And I believe that we need to give them the resources, including the training, to make sure that they can carry out that job effectively and as professionally as possible. I too am a believer in fiscal responsibility. That is kind of my core. You know, my bride and I are at a point in life where, you know, we could probably afford to pay a little bit more in taxes. But I also know that there's a lot of people in this community that are not in that position. There's seniors that, you know, if social security is a big part of your retirement income, you're getting hurt pretty bad right now. You know, and there's a lot of young families that, you know, are struggling to make ends meet. And again, my goal is just to make Blaine and Spring Lake Park and Anoka County a great place to live and work.
Thank you. And so now we'll move on to the questions that were submitted through the website. And there was about 30 submitted, which is a good a number, but I have to tell you that I moderated the community a few weeks ago where there were 101 questions submitted. So it gave me a little bit more to choose from, but I found that the questions here kind of fell into five categories. Information about your experience directly, communications and transparency within the county, property taxes, information about employee groups at the county, the historical society, library, and finally, a lot of them on transportation. So we'll start with the first section, and some of this you answered in your introductory stuff, but if you could just think for a moment about personal traits. So other than professional experience, tell us a little bit more about you personally. What personal traits would make you well-suited for this office? And we'll start with Dave Clark.
Thank you. Personal traits, you know, I am a, I'm an analytical. I like to analyze things, ask questions, dig into them. You know, my, my career has been around building relationships, whether it is, you know, at City Hall, or with residents, or even with customers. You know, I, when I was a young man, I decided that, how would I want people to remember me? And I always came back to being as a straight shooter. I may not give you the answer that you want, but I will play it straight. Not perfect, I admit that, but I do my darnedest to be, to operate honestly and with integrity. Because what you do behind closed doors is probably, that's where integrity happens. Time's up.
Okay. Same question. What personal traits make you well-suited for this office? Next is Julie Jepson.
Thank you. Two very, very distinctive things. First of all, through my work with the local nonprofit Stepping Stone, I realized from day one that partnerships were essential to the work. There was no doing this work and supporting the homeless community in Anoka County in a vacuum. You needed partnerships. And those partnerships, over the last 10 years of being developed, really came to a, really came to an amazing point when COVID hit. And every single call I made was answered, every single email I sent out was responded to. And the community came into support of Stepping Stone remarkably. Partnerships are essential. The second thing that I learned over the last 10 years is I have lived a very lucky life. I've lived a very privileged life. And listening to those who are experiencing homelessness is essential to solving homelessness. Listening to our diverse communities in impacting what we can in local government will only impact those diverse communities.
Thank you. And so moving on to the kind of next section, there were many questions on communications and transparency within the county board. And so I'll start with a question about Metropolitan Council. And this goes to Julie Jepson. What processes can you think of that would strengthen the relationship between the county and the Metropolitan Council?
That is a very loaded question, because right now, it's my understanding that the partnership or the relationship between Anoka County and the Met Council is a little strained. I don't know exactly the history of behind it. There's a lot more information that I need. And listening both to Anoka County and understanding what's happening, and listening to both the Met Council and understanding what's going on with them. Again, partnerships are key. Repairing damage that has been caused through those partnerships are essential, and making sure, moving forward, things are successful so that we can actually work together to get things done.
Okay. And same question. What process can you think of that would strengthen the relationship between the county and the Met Council? Dave Clark?
I'm not a big fan of the Met Council. You know, that's basically an unelected body that is making decisions and trying to drive things to the cities and counties. You know, I would like to see that board either dissolved or have a greater influence of elected officials on that board. There is a, there's a great value in regional planning, you know, and making sure that you're going to have the services you need. But I think there's, there are some issues where the Met Council maybe gets a little bit too intrusive to what they should be doing. You know, the, yeah, there's, there's probably some relationship issues between the Met Council and the county. You know, a lot of it stems from, you know, the North Star contract. You know, the, the county board, you know, stood up for the residents of Anoka County, the taxpayers, and I think they're working to resolve that. It is what it is.
Okay. Moving on to the next question related to communications. What processes can you think of to create more transparency between county agencies and the public? First up is Dave Clark.
Great, thank you. During my time on the City Council, you know, we took great lengths to be as transparent as we could. You know, for example, you know, we used to have workshop meetings when I first got on, and we would come in with, to the workshop meeting before the council meeting, and we would start talking about things that were on the council agenda that night. It's like, folks, if we have questions, we should be asking and answering these questions live, on camera, and for the record. You know, I like the idea that we post our minutes, we post our meeting agendas. I like that, you know, that the full meetings are, you know, at a time when people can attend them. I like that they're videotaped, that they're broadcast. You know, going out for public hearings, you know, getting public input in advance of making a decision, I think is critically important to that transparency and that communication.
And same question. What processes can you think of to create more transparencies between county agencies and the public? And next is Julie Jepson.
You create transparency through accessibility. Board and committee meetings must be open to the public. Boarding committees must have a designated time period for public comment. We need to use our existing technology to livestream and record these meetings so those who cannot be in attendance, or those who physically can't be in attendance through some disability that they may or may not have, can watch the meetings and know and be educated in what's going on. Speaking to disabilities, it also, that also includes accessibility. In my work with the Minnesota Shelter Task Force, a chair of the Minnesota Shelter Task Force, there is a contingency seat on that task force about disabilities. Those with disabilities need to access the public domain. Adapt a microphone to be measured at all different heights. Remove time limits for those with disabilities who have issues communicating, and a number of other things in which we can provide support to those in our community with disabilities.
Thank you. The next question relates to some of the committees on the county board, and I know that the League of Women Voters has done some research over the last several years into how those committees are structured and trying to get more of the committee meetings opened up. And so kind of related to that issue, would you find it appropriate to add members of the public to the commissioner committees that make recommendations to the full board? And first up is Julie Jepson.
This is a great question. And as I mentioned earlier, the only way to do your job effectively, if you do not have intimate knowledge of homelessness, if you do not have intimate knowledge of being hungry, or needing assistance with housing, or needing assistance through any of the various committees, you need feedback. You need people to tell you, and, and you need to listen to those individuals in how you are going to make decisions as an elected official. It's definitely a very slippery slope in inviting the public to be, to have a chair in this committee. At the bare minimum, it would be great to have advocates reporting to the committee or being a resource to help the committee make decisions. But at this time, I'm not committed to putting individuals of the public on the committee or not. I think a lot of that is, has a lot more conversation that has to happen.
Okay. Same question. Would you find it appropriate to add members of the public to the county commissioner committees which make recommendations to the full board? Next is Dave Clark.
I think I would echo the same comment that, you know, there is a value in, you know, even as a city council, there's a value in having that workshop where you can hash things out without having to worry about a camera. That doesn't mean that you're not transparent. That just means you can have some very frank conversations. You know, the city of Blaine, we always had a number of citizen committees. You know, we had, you know, people on our Planning and Zoning Commission. We've had people on the park board. I, you know, I helped create the Natural Resources Conservation Board. You know, there's a senior advisory committee. So I think, I agree that getting that input into the process is good, but I would want to take a deeper, deeper look at the structure before I made a commitment either way.
Okay. Next question. Should the county video record and post on its YouTube channel their workshops and commissioner committee meetings? So it's kind of related to the one earlier. Why or why not? And the first one up is Dave Clark.
Well, I think anytime that you notice something as a public meeting, you ought to be videotaping it and, you know, making that video available for people to watch and see what's going on. You know, again, there are times when you need to have a, you know, a small group discussion where you have less than the full, full county board, and I don't know that those would necessarily fit into that rule, but I think you need to follow the spirit of the open meeting law, not just the written word, but the, the letter of it as well.
Okay. Same question. Should the county video record and post on its YouTube channel their workshops and commissioner committee meetings? Next is Julie Jepson.
Yeah, as, as I already mentioned, I do strongly believe that they should. There's nothing worse than government who keeps its doors closed, and that just breeds question of what's really going on behind closed doors. Most of the time, people just want to know what's going on, and that's a very, very simple way, just to educate the community in what you're saying, and how it's being said, and how decisions are being made.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question related to property taxes. And actually, there were two questions submitted, and they were both kind of from different perspectives, so I think we'll ask both of them and, and see what your responses are. So I'll start with the first one of, what services are you willing to curtail or eliminate in order to avoid a property tax increase? First up is Julie Jepson.
Boy, those are such tough decisions. That is probably the toughest decision that we have to make here on, that I've had to make here on council, that I anticipate making on the county board. Making decisions about taxes is very challenging. No one wants to pay more taxes, but then the alternative is, if you don't raise taxes, you have to cut services. On Blaine City Council, we went through this exact situation when COVID pandemic hit, and we had to, just in anticipating a lower pay of property taxes, had to anticipate that we weren't going to bring in the revenue that we were anticipating through property taxes. So we cut back on filling back in open positions. We cut back on the seasonal grounds work. And, and yes, we got complaints. Yes, we got frustrated neighbors wondering when the, the park grass was going to get cut, but those are the types of decisions that you need to make. Because when you cut taxes, you cut services, and people are very used to high level of services. So again, those are really tough decisions to make that have to be made.
Same question. What services are you willing to curtail or eliminate to avoid a property tax increase? Dave Clark?
You know, when we went through the Great Recession, 2008 from 2012, you know, we basically did the same thing. We saw a decline in property tax revenue coming, even though the numbers said it would increase for a couple of years. And what we did is we started to batten down the hatches. You know, we, we dialed back on, you know, big plans. We, you know, avoided hiring a lot of staff. So we basically tried to be proactive, knowing that, you know, during a recession is the worst time to be increasing taxes. I mean, like there's ever a good one. You know, but that, you know, when people were losing their homes, losing their businesses. You know, I think, you know, in making those decisions, it's a matter of prioritization. You start, start with your most important activities, and you make sure you're, you're doing those well. And as you work your way down the list of priorities, that's where you can find opportunities to maybe save some things. And looking at your assumptions as to how you do things, how often you send a mailing, how often you mow that park, is one way to look at how you adjust the budget appropriately.
Okay. And kind of the related question, and this one is, for what reasons would you support a property tax increase? Dave Clark?
There are times in life when you just really don't have a chance or an opportunity to avoid it. And again, I think, you know, before you go down the path of increasing property taxes, you need to be uncovering, you know, every stone that you can to find savings and be looking out for people. There's going to be situations, and the county might be facing some of those situations in the coming years. You know, it's, like I said, it's a matter of prioritization and being willing to say yes or no to certain things.
Same question. What reasons would you support a property tax increase? Julie Jepson?
Thank you. Again, very, very challenging, conflicting situation to be in. We never want to raise property, we never want to raise property taxes, but there is a very specific level in which you need to continue maintaining that high level of services. And we are in a situation like everybody else where we're dealing with inflation right now. And so the only way in dealing with inflation, in having construction projects go up 40%, the only way we can do that is through property tax. But I also understand that there are grants, there are rocks that need to be overturned. There are various opportunities and resources to go to prior to that one solution. That is the last opportunity, the last solution that we go to. But one of the other things, too, is to always be conscious and think long-term about building those reserves. Because those reserves are for the sole purpose of when we become into an economic downturn, those reserves will supplement our budget so that we don't have to raise property taxes, so that we still don't have to cut services and still give that high level of service that residents are expecting.
Okay. So moving on, a big part of the county budget is for staffing. This question relates to unionization. So the question is, are you open to or opposed to unionization of larger segments of the county workforce, such as the clerical staff, social workers, financial workers, and library staff? First up, Julie Jepson.
So, you know, everyone has the right to unionize. I would never want to squash anyone's right to, to become a part of a union. Whether they want to or not, I'd have to talk with them and figure out the purpose and the reasoning behind wanting to unionize, and if there was something we could accommodate to them prior to that happening. Because I think becoming and creating its own union, we just had a very, very specific example in the city of Blaine, which was very confusing and didn't quite understand quite well, but creating a union is, is a little divisive and a little confusing. And so let's repair the relationship before we have to get to that point. And if we have to get to that point, support employees in their constitutional ability to form a union, and then negotiate from there.
Same question. Are you open to or opposed to unionization of larger segments of the county workforce, such as the clerical staff, social workers, financial workers, and library staff? And this goes to Dave Clark.
Well, you know, my, my training and my beliefs are, you know, you get unions, unions are the fault of management, because you're not treating the people the way they need to be treated. You know, and I think you need to be looking at the root cause of the problems underneath. You know, I would not deny anybody the right to form a union, but I think it's also the role of management to look and say, okay, what are the working conditions and wages? And are we doing the things that we need to do to make it a comfortable, good working place where you don't feel like you need to have a union? Short, sweet, to the point.
Okay, great. So kind of related to that is something that's been in the news lately about the county. There's a group called Helios, H-E-L-I-O-S. It's a human resources consulting firm. So the specific question is, why should or shouldn't the county continue to work with Helios, this human resources consulting firm? And they produced the study showing that the county is well under the average, medium rate of pay in the metro area. First up, Dave Clark.
Yeah, I believe they should continue to be working with Helios. I think it's been a two- or three-year project that they've been doing before. I think it's a good thing that they, you know, determined that problem. And when I talked earlier, my question about, you know, budget priorities, you know, that's an issue coming forward for the board to deal with, you know, that where do you get those additional dollars to bring those salaries up to par? And what is the impact on that to other programs or even that, that potential property tax increase? So yeah, I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed.
Okay. Same question. So why should or shouldn't the county continue to work with Helios, which is the human resources consulting firm that produced a study showing that the county is well under the average, medium rate of pay in the metro area? And this goes to Julie Jepson.
Yeah, I agree. The county continues to maintain that relationship with Helios. You work with organizations that expert in certain fields. And if you are not that expert, you need to partner with them and listen to them and carry out what they recommend. And knowing that a number, a very large percentage of county staff are under the market rate, should be a sign to the county board that things need to change. And so continuing that relationship on how to gradually get up to market rate and define what your process is and policy is on getting there and maintaining that market rate, you need to use those experts in Helios to answer those questions and provide that guidance.
Thank you. And so moving on to the next question, it relates to term limits. Should there be term limits for county commissioners? Should we have them in your office, and how should that be done? First up- First up is Julie Jepson.
Oh, that's a great question. Thank you to whoever asked that. You know, I'm, I'm, boy, I think I have a hard time with elected officials who make it, who make it their job to be a politician. My, I was asked the other day, like, are you, not the other day, the other year, like, what is your plan for city council? And I feel like, you know what? I, I feel like if I do what I wanted to do in two terms, eight years, I think I'm good and let somebody else come in and step into the role and do what needs to be done too. I don't think this is, this is not a stop off for the next position. It's a place to do the work that you want to get done and see the change you want to see. And then when you're done doing that and you have fulfilled your promise to the community and you have fulfilled your personal goals, you need to step away and let someone else come in.
Okay, same question related to term limits. Should we have them for county commissioners and how can it be done? Next is Dave Clark.
I'm not a fan of term limits. I think we have term limits every two and every four years, and that's called the ballot box. I, you know, and I guess I was originally, Alice Johnson is a former state rep in Spring Lake Park, really was influential in my thinking in this because she says, you know, Dave, if you have a four or six year or eight year term limit, what you end up with is the elected officials not having the history in the background. And then you end up with your staff people kind of running the show because they have more knowledge and can direct things. You know, really, it takes your first term to really figure out the job and all the things that go with it. And it's the second, third term going on where you, you know, I think in a lot of ways, start to be able to, you know, hit your stride and move forward. So no, I'm reluctant for term limits. You know, I made a personal choice to term limit myself. You know, and like I said, you have the ballot box on a regular basis that provides those term limits.
Okay, we'll move on to another topic. There are a couple of questions submitted about the library board and the historical society. And the first one is, the current county board in the city of Anoka appear to be at odds over the future of the Anoka County Historical Society. The current residence is in the city's former library, which is at the corner of Third and Van Buren. So the question is, what do you think the future should be for that building? And where would you relocate the historical society? In fact, should it even be moved? First up is Dave Clark.
That's a great question and quite candidly, I'm not highly involved in that. You know, that, that hasn't been a Blaine issue, but I can tell you this. I am a fan of history. You know, if you don't learn from history, history will repeat itself. You know, and history can both have a positive influence and a negative influence on things. So I'm supportive of history programs. I don't know that I know enough about that exact topic to be able to say they should stay in that building or move or where you get the funding from it. But I think there is a great deal of value in preserving history, you know, local history.
Okay, same question. What do you think the future should be for the Anoka County Historical Society's current building? Should it relocate or should it be moved at all? And this goes to Julie Jepson.
Yeah, so the Anoka County Historical Society is a true fiber of our being. It holds all of the history that this county has to offer. I was just there over the summer for the Federal Cartridge 100th Anniversary. And the amount and quantity of artifacts and information and documents and uniforms and video. I mean, if, if that moves, if that changes, if that goes away, we lose who we are as a community and that is not okay. The location of where it is next, excuse me, across the street from the county building is ideal. It partners so well with the county government center and who the historical society is and who it represents. And so being located right in the city center, I think, is, is a great location. And, but if there's other opportunities of a better location or a more appropriate location, I would love to hear them.
Okay, and so another question related to that then. What do you see as a good relationship between the Anoka County Board and the Anoka County Library System? How do you define the county board's role in regards to the library system? First up, Julie Jepson.
It's my understanding that, that's a really tough one because the executive director of the library system basically has two bosses. They, the executive director has the county board and the library board. So answering to both entities brings that person into two very conflicting at times focuses. I think either the county board has to relinquish ultimate ownership of the library board or the library board has to step away and only focus on the county board. Now, having said that, that's a very difficult thing to do, to just have the executive director of the libraries be reporting to the county board. Because I think the library system is a very important, very specifically known and needs specific knowledge to run effectively and efficiently. And me, as a county board member elected into this new position, I would certainly not have the knowledge of knowing how to run a huge library system.
Okay, same question. What do you see as a good relationship between the Anoka County Board and the Anoka County Library System? And how do you define the county board's role in regards to the library system? Next up is Dave Clark.
Well, I think the operative word here is collaboration. To give you an example, the Blaine Spring Lake Park Moundsview Fire Department, they're their own separate legal entity, but they get their funding from the cities of Blaine, Spring Lake Park, and Moundsview. And so, you know, they've got those conflicting directions from the different cities. And it's the job of that, of the chief. And in the library board's case, the executive director or the head of the organization to kind of balance those. And I think by having joint meetings between the two, you know, and making sure that you set out, you know, here are the general principles that we're looking for, that you get everybody on the same page so that the county board knows what the library board is looking to do. And the library board is aware of what the county board's direction is so that you can merge that and get some unity of direction between the two.
Okay, now we'll move on to transportation. What do you see as the future of public transportation in Anoka County, especially in your district? What are the public transportation needs? First up is Dave Clark.
Well, the, the obvious answer to that is, you know, transportation is Highway 65. That's a big glaring animal that, you know, we have been working on for 20 plus years. It was failing even before I got on the city council. You know, so getting 65 fixed is done. When I was on the council, we did a lot of work with our county roads. You know, we need to be looking at, you know, North Star because, you know, the subsidy per rider on that is shockingly high. You know, and we have to be looking long term, is a train actually the right solution for that? Or is a bus, you know, a more flexible, more economical system of providing that transportation? So, you know, there's, there's personal vehicle transportation, there's, you know, mass transit. You know, we're going to have to be looking to the future of, you know, autonomous vehicles and what role they're going to play. You know, electric vehicles, I mean, there's a lot of things happening in the world of transportation.
And same question. What do you see as the future of public transportation in Anoka County, especially in your district? What are the current public transportation needs? Next is Julie Jepson.
Yeah, public transportation up here is, is very, very challenging. 93% of Blaine residents take their car to work. So re-educating, re-providing, excuse me, or providing other alternatives to car transportation is, is a huge milestone to overcome, especially in this community. However, the, the routes for public transportation in specific areas near North Town have to become more efficient, have to be expanded upon so that people are not so reliant on their cars. Because owning a car for someone who is housing poor, has number of expenses, needs a job to afford the housing wage gap and their housing right now, owning a car is incredibly expensive. So providing greater opportunity for public transportation is key. Other opportunities and new developments through modal hubs and car ride sharing and movement of traffic through Highway 65 and all the different other county roads and city roads have also got to be a priority.
Okay, and one more on transportation. And I know you each mentioned a little bit about Highway 65, but with your county board area being Blaine and Spring Lake Park, obviously Highway 65 is of major concern. And somebody submitted a question related to the number of troubling road accidents and serious accidents along Highway 65. Can you give us 60 seconds about specifically what would you do about Highway 65? First up is Julie Jepson.
First and foremost, what I would do with Highway 65 is remove as many stoplights and ways in which individuals can come into contact with one another, either bumper to bumper or T-bone. Since, since 2015, there have been 1,931 accidents. Almost 300 of those required, resulted in a personal injury and two resulted in death. The cost to fix that road is hundreds of millions of dollars. The cost not to fix that road, it's not even a question. Police, fire, medical do not have the time to wait and navigate traffic to get to your emergency. School buses do not have time to wait in traffic to get your kid to school on time. But businesses do not have the time to wait for product to stock their shelves. And our community does not have the time to wait and heal at the hospital, to wait for their car repairs, or heaven forbid, to spend any time at a funeral.
And same question specifically to Highway 65. There's many accidents and serious road trouble. Specifically, what can you do about Highway 65?
Well, as a county commissioner, you know, I think Julie summed it up pretty well. When you eliminate the lights, you eliminate the conflict points, you know, and you eliminate opportunities for driver error when you have something going on like that. You know, and driver behavior is a very big part of what's going on. You have, you know, some accidents that are caused by drivers operating under the influence of alcohol or drugs or something else. You have people doing things recklessly. So it's not just a matter, you know, fixing the road is going to help, eliminating the conflict points. But we also individually have to be looking at our own behaviors. You know, are you texting and driving? How many phone calls do you take while you're trying to drive? You know, for the county, you know, we have to be looking at, you know, the impact with the county roads because there are a lot of county roads in the city and they're going to impact with Highway 65.
Okay, and we're going to be closing here soon. But before we get to the closing comments, I thought I'd have a little bit lighter question. Somebody submitted, if you had kind of unlimited resources, what would you do at the county level to make life better for Anoka County residents? First up, Dave Clark.
Unlimited resources to make life better. Oh my gosh, where do you begin? That's like, you know, asking the genie which three wishes you'd like to have. You know, I would say, you know, probably, you know, the number one priority would be, you know, the 911 call center. Because there's a, you know, a direct relationship between, you know, 911 service and saving lives. I think that's a big deal. You know, we would certainly fully fund Highway 65 and all the county roads. You know, every, you know, county employee would be able to retire at age 50. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that you could do if you had the money. But the reality is that we don't have unlimited resources, you know, and we've got to prioritize. But again, start with things that affect public safety, the public good. You know, how are you going to help the most people that you can?
Okay, same question. So unlimited resources, what would you do to make life better for Anoka County residents? Julie Jepson.
Yeah, that's, boy, that's a dream that, that would be fun fulfilling, right? So yes, obviously, fund, be done with Highway 65 and take that off the table. Pay employees what the market rate is and continue building a solid HR professional development plan with a step plan in which they can reach those goals to attain the professional level that they want to go. Take the county roads and make them safer. Educate our community in fire, driving. Become better humans to one another. My personal passion is build housing so there is no longer homelessness problem. And so our resources at the county for public health, for housing, for child protection, for corrections, just poof, goes away. There's so many things, but we don't live in that reality. We don't live in that reality unfortunately, and there are not unlimited resources. So the, the things that make the most importance is going to the people who need the help the most and listening to what they need and putting our resources towards, towards that.
Okay, so we're moving into closing comments. And as you recall, when we started out, Dave Clark made the opening comment. So we're going to have Julie Jepson give the last word. So with that, first up, Dave Clark, closing comments, 60 seconds.
Again, thank you, everybody, for, you know, being here tonight and kind of listening to the, to the whole tape to get to this point. You know, I have a good track record, you know, working in the city of Blaine. You know, we accomplished a lot of wonderful things while, during my tenure there. You know, I'm glad to see that the new council has picked up the mantle and continued on. You know, you know, every, every council has their big dream projects and you work towards them. Some of them work, some of it don't. You know, but I have, you know, 30 plus years of management experience in the private sector. I've got, you know, 20 plus years of local government experience. And again, I think those are, you know, excellent qualifications for somebody to serve on the county board.
Closing comments, Julie Jepson.
Thank you, and, and thank you to League of Women Voters for having us here today. I hope, I hope some of the things that we talked about resonated with many of you. My first and foremost priority and goal is funding 65, and we're well on our way to do that. In the last two years, we have made greater strides in fixing five of the six most dangerous and deadly intersection that runs right through our city. And not only is it the road that is the priority, but it also contributes to the welfare, health, and well-being of all of us in Blaine, all of us in Spring Lake Park and to the greater Anoka County community. Being in this role, your vote to become your next commissioner, you will have my full attention to this job. I do not have a job with inflexible hours. I do not have a job that requires me to travel. This is my job, people are my job, and listening to you will be my job. As a mom, it's my responsibility to take care of my family. As an elected official, it's my responsibility to take care of you and yours. If you want to learn more about me, my values, and my priorities, please look at my website, jepsonforcommissioner.com. And if I haven't met you at the door, you'll be seeing me soon.
Thank you. We have just a little bit of wrap up here. I'd like to thank the candidates. We appreciate you being here and for speaking to the voters about the issues and most importantly, for running for Anoka County Board in District Six, which is Blaine and Spring Lake Park. And thanks to North Metro Cable for this video production tonight. Special thanks to the viewers for your interest in, in becoming informed voters. And as we move through the election season, there are lots of local election forums on our website, l w v a b c m n dot org, as well as the North Metro Cable. And you can see things on websites and YouTube. If you need to register to vote, please do so. There's an online way to do it. The, the best website to check for anything related to elections is W W W dot m n votes dot org, M N V O T E S dot org. And so make your voice heard. The general election is November 8th and early voting has started on September 23rd. With that, thank you and good night.